Welcome, everyone, to the March 11 City Council Work Session. Seems like there's not so many of us around the table today. I want to let you know that two of our councilors are representing the city at the League of Cities Conference, so that's why they're not here. And Councilor Surratt is on the phone. So, the first topic is a very important one, and that is Eugene Modern Electric Ford Riverfront Development. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Denny and his team to take us through a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Today, we're going to provide an update on the E-Web Riverfront Redevelopment Project, and we thought this would be a really good opportunity to introduce council, and in some respects, the community, to the U of O Foundation team. May have only been introduced to them in the headlines of the paper at this point, so we thought this would be a really good opportunity for Jay Nemiet from the U of O Foundation and his ginormous team sitting behind me here to kind of provide some of their aspirations and goals for this project and so forth. We're going to kind of break this up into two segments. I'll let Jay kind of provide an overview, and then in the second part of that, I'll kind of provide some overview of kind of where we've been, where we are now, and kind of where we're going as next steps for this project. So with that, I'll introduce you to Jay Nemiet.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon to all of you. I want to thank you for taking time out of your day to talk to us about something that we'd like to think is a real transformative opportunity for our community. It's a very important project. We've been working for the last year on this project with E-Web, with our team, with John and Denny, and this is an opportune time for us to come before you. Let me, before I start and introduce myself in the foundation, let me give you a sense of, if I could get our team to just stand, you'll get a sense of the fact that it's not just me, but there is a large team here, and their presence is indicative of the passion that we have for being able to see this through to completion. So, thank you all.
Well, I thought they were just excited to come see us. Evidently not.
That too. That too. Let me start, if you will, allow me to, to give you a sense of who I am, because any partnership really boils down to who is the person on the other side of the handshake? And can we trust those people? Are they honest? Is there integrity? Let me give you a sense. My wife and I moved to Eugene 20 years ago. I grew up in Boston, she in New York. We had lived in major metropolitan areas, New York, San Francisco. We decided 20 years ago we wanted to have a family, and what better place to go than a college community? We literally took a year. We went around the country. We looked at 50-something college communities. We made the mistake of coming to Eugene in August, when it's just sunny and warm and no humidity, and we said, "This is home. This is perfect." That was 20 years ago. We have a daughter, who is now a sophomore at South. She's gone through the public schools. My wife is actively engaged in South. If anyone has a child there, you read my wife's email every week. I am the president this year of the Eugene Education Foundation, so we care passionately about education, we care passionately about the community, we care passionately about making a difference in this place. I'm reminded, former President of the United States, who was from Massachusetts, John F. Kennedy, he said something, and John and I were talking about this recently, and I think we need more of this kind of spirit in America today, and that is, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. I don't have any illusions that I can change what's going on in DC, and I'm not even sure I can have any impact on what goes on in Salem, but I'd like to think that I, through my initiatives and working with other like-minded people, can have a real impact in this community, the community we've decided to call home. And that's part of the motivation for us getting involved in this activity. John has chided me over the last couple of years about, "Jay, you invest globally. How about thinking about investing locally?" What has happened is, we've had a beautiful confluence of events. The master plan, as envisioned and approved by the community, has now entitled. And as I've watched, as the foundation has watched, all of the work that you folks have done collaboratively in investing in downtown and revitalizing this downtown, which was so important, we gain great confidence that you folks are philosophically aligned with our vision, and our vision is actually philosophically aligned with your vision. When you folks talk about looking at an investment that you would make in triple bottom line or in support of the Envision Eugene and the seven pillars associated with that, you folks are actually doing what we try to do, and that is, you are investing, and you're looking through your investment to do good for the community. And in fact, when we look at investing, if we can match doing well financially for the donors who have given us the fiduciary responsibility to invest their funds, and we at the same time can do good, that's what I like to call the Holy Grail of investing. And I think you folks get to do that on a regular basis. We don't get to do that with all our investing, but when we see an opportunity to do that, we get really excited about it, we get really passionate about it. And so if I can combine our investing with doing something locally that is transformative for the community, I love it. And we have a team who's local and who feels the same kind of passion and dedication to this project, and so we are here to try to see this through to completion. When I look at what the River District redevelopment would be, at its surface, it strikes me as I look through the triple bottom line, as well as the seven pillars of the Envision Eugene, that we tick all the boxes. We talk about it being a compact urban redevelopment. We talk about creating economic opportunity for the whole community. We talk about affordable housing, and our vision is to provide housing for all socioeconomic groups, from affordable housing through market rent, through condominiums. Our sense is that if you have a monoculture, monocultures are very fragile, but if you build a very diversified kind of culture, which is attributable to having lots of different socioeconomic groups, that creates a vitality and a vibrancy, which I think is philosophically reflective of who we are as a community, and we take great pride in. Another issue is having to deal with climate change, and that's such an important consideration. And when we look at the fact that we can have people who might be in the service sector working in Eugene, who are able to live in downtown Eugene, who could then walk to work, I think back when my wife and I lived in San Francisco, and people in the service sector, doing incredibly important work in the Bay Area, had to live in the Central Valley, and they'd be three hours away. It would be disruptive for their family life, it would be disruptive in terms of the carbon footprint that they had, and here, if we can change that paradigm, and we can have people who are able to walk to work, that's pretty powerful. The university, because it's increased its student body, is going to be hiring hundreds of new faculty. These people are going to have to come from around the country. If we can offer them a different kind of alternative housing, as opposed to the South Eugene suburbia, and we can give them what youth today really want, which is kind of an urban chic, something that is not in plentiful supply in Eugene, then that makes this attractive to other folks, who can come, raise their family, pay income taxes in the community, we start to get this multiplier effect, which becomes pretty profound. I don't think my wife and I are alone when I say, "People love college towns," and here's an opportunity for us to marry the community and the college into something that's more powerful than just the individuals. We talk about in your seven pillars protecting the natural resource. Here in Eugene, I've always been amazed that we have this gorgeous river that flows through this community, and yet we've kind of turned our back on it. And when I travel around the world, I see how Europeans honor and preserve their water resources, and I'm thinking, "My God, here's a perfect opportunity, as envisioned by the master plan, for us to honor the Willamette River and do something in a dignified way, and do something in a way in which we can allow the community to have access to that river." So, again, another powerful, another powerful component of what I think the redevelopment represents. I've called it a transformative redevelopment, and part of that is because, as I've alluded to before with the folks behind me, we're all locals. We're not going to be like outside capital, who comes in, builds the most expedient, highest rate of return investment, maybe bringing a big box outlet from someplace else, and then walks away, washes their hands clean of it, and we, as a community, have to live with it. We're locals, we take great pride in the community, we're only going to build something that we can have pride in, and is going to be uniquely Eugene. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can look at what other communities around the country, or even around the globe, have done to revitalize their downtowns, but with that information at hand, we need to overlay that with something that's quintessentially Eugene. Because if we do something, take the, which is my hometown, Boston, Massachusetts, which redeveloped its quarters, but it was Faneuil Hall Market, well, Faneuil Hall Market in Eugene just doesn't fly. That doesn't make any sense. But there are lessons to be learned there that we apply locally, that are uniquely Eugene, and that's pretty powerful. At the end of the day, if we're going to do something that's going to succeed financially, there's no getting around, in fact, your triple bottom line. It's got to work for the community, it's got to work socially, and any business, it's got to work environmentally. And any business, frankly, that doesn't think through that, in the 21st century, in a resource-constrained world, is not going to succeed. So in fact, your triple bottom line is the only way, the only lens through which any enterprise can look at doing work and being successful in the end. In addition to making this uniquely Eugene, again, because we live here and we care about it, and the foundation has a long-term investment horizon, we can afford to build quality. Some of the products that we see go up in Eugene, personal opinion, I think, not only sometimes lacking in taste, but sometimes lacking in quality. And the reality of the situation is, we have developers who come in, they have a certain rate of return that they need to earn, and if all of a sudden their pro forma is not working out, they start cutting corners. We don't have that kind of issue. We are committed, as we are, to honoring the master plan, to doing this in a quality way. Another important dimension to this is, as you folks have done a great job working with city staff in redeveloping downtown, we don't view this as, we don't view this development as competition with everything else that's going on, but we view it as a complement to everything that's going on. It would have a different feel, because it's connecting, as people have said, the Willamette to the Willamette, it's connecting the city to the river, and it offers a diversity. And again, as I talked about before, monocultures aren't healthy, aren't stable. This would offer a diversity of opportunity, of experience, of neighborhoods, and it creates an additional robustness in the downtown area. The other thing it would do for the public is, it would give them, through that Willamette to Willamette, access to the river, which we don't currently have right downtown. As envisioned in the master plan, there'd be a park, we're working with Denny and his staff on the design and development of that. Again, it's a place for the whole community to come work, play, have fun. It would be interesting, there'd be access for everybody, it would be an active place, it would be a safe place, it would be a place where people could congregate and celebrate being all things Eugene. E-Web chose us, if I may speak for them, six months ago, because we are locals and we care about the vision. E-Web is not going to sell this to someone and it forever be known as the E-Web property that was abused. They care about the legacy of this product, of this project, and they chose us because they know we're local, they know we're concerned, they know we're going to do the right thing. But they also chose us because we're long-term investors, and they know this is going to take a long-term commitment for us to realize our financial desires. I would like to suggest that that's perfectly aligned with how you folks think about things, because you are also investing, you're trying to generate returns that have a community benefit, that have a multiplier effect, and those will also occur over a long period of time. I think of not only the very direct financial returns in terms of having 17 acres go from not on the tax base to then being developed and being on the tax base, but the fact is that there'll be jobs created here, which will also add to the tax base, and there's a multiplier effect. The architects have told me, in these sorts of things, when you look across the country, that typically you have a 5X multiplier for every dollar that gets invested throughout all of the different ways in which a project ends up benefiting the community. So this has a real enormous potential impact that gives you folks additional resources to tackle other really challenging issues in the community. So, I will close with kind of where I began. I think, even though we might use different language, the Envision Eugene and its pillars, the triple bottom line, I think we are actually philosophically aligned in terms of looking at this as something that can do well financially, but also can do good for the community. And that's why I'm passionate about it, and that's why the foundation is sitting here, asking for your support in making this thing work. It's going to take E-Web, the city, and the foundation, working in an enlightened way for the benefit of the community, to make this thing happen. So thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to address any questions you might have at this point.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to say, I think, I appreciate your comments, I think you understand a lot of the vision we have as a council, and I know you heard from me about my concerns about it to be a unique area and really personify the river and all things river, and that, you know, I'll just say it again, that if I had my druthers, I would really like to see it be so uniquely rivered that it's unlike any other, any other place in our, in our city, or any other place you know about, from having maybe places where people go into our kayaks, you know, things that are very unique, and not at Oakway, and not at downtown, but really to that part of our community. So I'm very excited about that. And the other comment I would make is that, you know, the reason we look like we had our backs to the river here is because we're trying to get away from it. That's the history of the river here, is that for many years, it flooded everything, and we had to redirect the river and get it under some kind of control, and so people headed to the higher ground to get away from the river. And it's actually been only in relatively recent times that we've been able to reapproach the river as a place you can be safely next to, as opposed to having, when I came in the '70s, it was still in West Eugene, at River Road, Santa Clara, you'd still have yearly flooding going on, so it is not, it's not that long ago, so. I think the transformational piece is really, really important, and I just want you to know that I am very excited by it, and will try to be supportive in any way I can.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yes. Anybody else want to make any questions, comments? All right, yes.
So, I love your passion, and I know some of the people on the team, and I know that they have the same kind of passion, so I think a necessary ingredient and quality is that you have passion about it, and I think that you've shown that to me anyway. I like that you're local, I like that you're interested in the TBL, I think you're right that that needs to be a basis for decision-making and for planning to go forward, and that's uniquely Eugene. I emphasize what the mayor said about, "This is a unique opportunity to create something that has a Eugene stamp on it, not, not doesn't look like everything else in the country, where we have strip malls and everything looks the same, all the stores are the same, and everything's same, 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 same." I really would love to see this be redeveloped in a unique fashion, and maybe you could talk a little bit about that, and how does that translate into what's going to really be built?
I think we are very fortunate, and this was by design, that the architects who are on our team, Raul Broca, were actually very instrumental in the design of the master plan, so they didn't have to learn what the community was wishing for, they know, because they were part of the dialogue. So, that is first and foremost what's going to help inform how we think about this. As I suggested to you, in order for this thing to be all things to all people, what we are doing is, we are getting a sense from market studies, as well as talking to individuals, about what the best needs are, because we don't want to duplicate things that are already done. We don't want to compete with others, we want to complement what others are doing. And one of the things I didn't mention in my speech, which I think is really important, is if an outside developer came to do this, there's a really high likelihood that the outside developer would bring some national store here. And what we want this to do, when we talk about this, is for all the community, that also includes the business people of this community. And we have already had conversations with business people who would love to be down there, so if we can help support local business in relocating or adding on to down there, and give them a leg up and be a part of this vision, then it's another way for us to continue this notion of doing good for all of Eugene, not just individuals, who might be the consumers of the good, but also local business people who can be the providers of that good. I can't give you, to specifically answer your question about what the specifics are, because what we are working on, we're in the middle innings of the due diligence, and the team, as a matter of fact, the team just came from an hour's worth of visioning, of figuring out what can be built, given where the roads need to go, what the demand is for those sorts of things, but it, so I can't give you a specific example, but I can tell you in general, there will be mixed residences, there will be offices, there will be retail, there will be restaurants, and there will be a rather significant park that runs along the river.
And housing. Housing as well?
Yes, if I, yes. Housing across from, as I said earlier, from affordable housing all the way through to either ownership or rentals of regular kind of units, for family, for individuals, as well as ownership, maybe condominiums. And one of the things that we actually have, and I've learned from, from the team, is it's almost impossible to get funding to build a condominium anymore, because of issues associated with it. This is one of the beauties of us being local, is that we already have, and I am not exaggerating, we have a list of almost 50 people who would like to own a condominium down there. It's going to take, as I said before, it's going to take lots of people from lots of different socioeconomic groups to create a vital, if you will, organism down there. It's not to the exclusion of any, and as a result of not exclusion of any, that means lower socioeconomic, as well as upper, and it creates a vibrancy there, that I think retail, office, as well as everyone. We live in a world, which I find increasingly disturbing, of haves and have-nots, and separation of people, and this is a marvelous opportunity for us to make a statement that is, I hope it's not uniquely Eugene, but it certainly is Eugene, that we're a community. We're not just a bunch of individuals.
Right. Denny, is this, is the Riverfront redevelopment area, is that within the Mupti?
Yes, the, we're talking about, if you recall, initially starting with the downtown planned boundary, which is kind of where we left Mupti when it was suspended, and so all of, yes, all of this is in the downtown planned boundary, all of the, with the exception of a couple of parcels, if you recall, north of Fourth Street, that when we looked at revisions to Mupti, we wanted to expand that little notch to include that property as well.
Right. And then, maybe you guys could speak to how important the railroad quiet zone is. We've gone, just had a recent update on that, and kind of moving forward on that, and I know that's an integral part.
I'll speak to that. You know, I think it's, I would put it in the category of critical. What Jay just described here is a mixed-use neighborhood that could potentially have a kind of a strong focus on housing. You know, housing next to the railroad tracks, there's just a lot of livability issues. And what we heard the other day in the work session, of course, is, this is a community livability issue, it's not just about the people that are immediately adjacent to the tracks. The other really important consideration is, I think there's some aspirations, you know, we just heard from Jay, that there's some aspirations for affordable housing. If you're going to qualify for tax credits, if we're going to use the tools that we have to help build affordable housing, home funds, CDBG funds, you have to go through an environmental review process that includes noise and decibel levels. I don't think there's any way we could get through that process and use those tools with, you know, 20 to 30 trains a day going by this site. I think that's going to be very, very problematic. So, from a lot of levels, community-wide, I think it's important, but specific to this project, I would almost say, in particular, if they're really focused on housing, which sounds like they are, it's critical.
Two other questions. Maybe, Denny, you can talk about the city's role in moving forward and rolling this out, especially the park and the relationship with E-Web.
I'm actually going to cover that in the next segment, if you don't, so if you...
And then, maybe I'm being Mr. Segway for you again, what about the timeline of how this is going to roll out? One of the things I hear is, "Yeah, that's a great vision, but maybe in my lifetime, I might see something started."
I'd be glad to address that. We are, I'll call it, in the middle innings of the due diligence. Appraisers are hard at work right now figuring out the land value for this. Our game plan is sometime in June, to have a memorandum of agreement signed with E-Web. Currently, team behind me is working diligently with E-Web on the terms of that, those would be the business terms. Our hope is we get agreement in principle on those in June, and then we put the legal wrapper around that by hopefully late summer. And, not to put any pressure on you folks, but an integral part of our agreement with E-Web is having a better sense of the kind of commitment, because it is going to take all three parties to be committed to making this thing work, is having some sense of the commitment from you all, based on work you do with John and Denny, over the course of the ensuing next four or five months. But our hope is, once we get that done by August, that a portion of the E-Web property that is now surplus is actually west of the Viaduct, and it already has the infrastructure in place, and we could start the process of redevelopment, and then we can work on rolling out the rest of the project over the next few years. So our sense is that we could very quickly, quickly being within a year of a signed agreement with E-Web, we could start to go vertical, and our sense is that we have to do this in a logical progression. We're working with Denny in terms of when the city gets engaged in building the park. We're going to have to be careful if we have a park and we have construction going on about keeping people safe. We're going to have to be thoughtful about laying this all out, and that's all the work that the city is doing with E-Web, is doing with our staff, to make this thing roll out in a logical progression. But we would hope within a year of signing.
Do you envision it being phased, or more or less of one project?
I envision a phasing of this sort of thing. I think that's the best way to think of it. And frankly, one of the other considerations we have is, this could be something that becomes a really long-term investment and phasing, in that maybe we start off with less density, because that's what the city can grow into, and maybe, and develop the whole property, and then maybe 15 or 20 years later, go through when the city demands kind of more density and more vertical, because I don't think 20 years ago, anyone would have envisioned a 12-story student housing building going in on Franklin.
Yeah, having a hard time doing that now.
Fair enough, so am I. Anyway, it is what it is, but so we could see this actually going back and then redeveloping what had been redeveloped, but we're talking a generation from now. And it's all part of kind of the living organism of a vital city.
And the legal wrapper you were talking about, that's the purchase and sale agreement?
Yes. That's correct.
Thanks, Mayor.
Claire, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, Mayor, you and Ellen covered them very nicely. Thanks.
You're very welcome. Okay, anybody else? Yes, George.
How many housing units will be built, are you thinking about?
It's premature to give you a specific number at this point in time. As I said earlier, the team literally just came from an hour-long visioning session, and so we're working on that.
Okay. All right. And I know one of the first things, well, one of the important things that has to happen is the reworking of the railroad crossing, and I imagine that the Riverfront Urban Renewal District funds would take care of most, if not all of that. And I think maybe the council should get a, you know, we've discussed this several times, so I think we have a pretty good idea of the general requirements, but the other requirements where the city, via the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, would be expected to participate financially, would be building a street through, you know, a street for access to all of the housing, and the shops, and the offices, and the park, and all that. So, I don't know, at some point, it might be, I thought we were going to dig in a little in more detail... in more detail today, but at some point...
I think Danny is gonna do that in a few minutes.
We'll give you a little bit of a preview of what's to come, really, is what our hope is in the second part of this.
Thank you.
We're ready for the second part, Dan.
Thank you, Jay, I really appreciate their whole team being here. Like Jay, I'm kinda the honored spokesperson for a really deep staff team that's working on this across Public Works and Planning and Development and the City Manager's Office and so forth. I was also honored to be a part of the selection team that went through the reviewing, the RFQ process, and I think it's pretty evident as to why this team rose to the top, so we're really excited and we thank them for coming today. I just wanna start a little bit, I think it's important to look at kinda where we've come before we start to talk about where we're going. We've been on this path to connect downtown to the river for many years, and there's been a lot of thoughtful, paced, deliberate steps and investments along that path. And really, this opportunity that Jay just kind of gave us an overview of, we don't really see as the beginning of a project. It's really, we're implementing really years of visioning and planning and community engagement and focused public and private development. And, you know, the opportunity that we really have today is to kinda continue that momentum and work with the partnership that Jay described, to really kind of continue down this path. It started with a downtown vision in 2000, believe it or not, and even the cover of the vision, you can't really see it there, but it basically says, "Our river, our downtown." You know, even 15 years ago, we were really talking about reconnection to the river. Following the downtown plan in 2002, the Courthouse District Concept Plan came forward. Again, community engagement, visioning, some implementation strategies, again, really focused on connecting to the river. In the vision, really, if you look at the vision, the community really asked for connection to the river. It's really something that was very, very important. They also asked for a place on the river. If you look at the Courthouse Concept Plan, it really set the framework for redevelopment, and it focused on access issues, walkability issues, that really set it, that would help set the stage for developing that area and ultimately getting to the river. Good example of that is the Eighth and Mill Crossing at the base of the Ferry Street Bridge. You used to not be able to navigate that at all as a pedestrian, and we've made specific road improvements to help pedestrians and get access to this site over time. Of course, the downtown plan followed, the vision evolved, really evolved into this downtown plan in 2004. Again, this really represents the collective wisdom of the community, just a lot of engagement that went on as part of that downtown plan process. We just passed the 10-year anniversary of the downtown plan. There's been a lot of accomplishments, as we look at the kind of the scope of projects that were kind of identified in the plan, a lot of them have moved forward. The master planning of the E-Web property was one of those major objectives in the downtown plan, and we've done that. One of the things that's on a shortlist of things that we haven't yet accomplished is the actual connection to the river and getting across the tracks to the river. I mentioned the transportation improvements. Again, these were intentional investments with the vision of connecting to the river. Redesigned the Courthouse District with a new road system. We specifically redesigned A Street to get across the railroad tracks. And the master plan, if you look at the master plan, it is specifically designed to line up with this A Crossing, and if you recall, in the master plan, there's kind of a great loop concept that has a street that basically goes across the tracks at Eighth and connects with Fifth. It's a way to basically circulate through the site and connect all some important districts downtown. Of course, the courthouse followed, in conjunction with the roadwork. Again, this was a very important investment. It really, as we envisioned it back then, we, you know, we went through great efforts to assemble that property and specifically put the courthouse on this property along with those road improvements, and really the vision really for it to become a landmark and an anchor, and really the beginning of kinda building downtown towards the river. Around 2008, we continued a comprehensive community engagement process, specifically around master planning the E-Web property, and, you know, during that public involvement kinda process, there was over 40 public meetings where we engaged with the community. Of course, the master plan was adopted in 2010, and it was codified in 2013, and this is a really important point, because it really locks in the vision and the many years of work that kinda preceded the master plan and the codification of the master plan. And it really creates an opportunity for us to move efficiently forward and not have to take several steps backwards to start thinking about what we want of the site and how we assure that we get kinda what the community has envisioned for the site, because in a sense, a lot of that has already been codified. Of course, we just celebrated the grand opening of the Northwest Community Credit Union. We supported with the sale of property and some other tools, again, specifically with the goal of reconnecting downtown to the river. The RFQ process, we mentioned the selection of the U of L Foundation team. This is really a tremendous opportunity. We've been working, as Jay mentioned, we've been working very closely with both the Foundation team and E-Web to really strategize how we kinda continue to go down this path, and it really comes down to some key, a series of really key next steps, and I'm gonna try to highlight some of those. We know this is a complicating, a complicated site, there's a lot of moving parts, we have very high expectations regarding the eventual outcome for this site. You know, I kinda look at this as kind of a just-in-time manufacturing process, where you take a lot of complicated moving parts and you try to deliver them on time, so eventually you get a really high-quality project in an efficient way and a cost-effective way. And so that's kinda how we're approaching this as the team, is trying to get our arms around all these moving parts and deliver a project that the community is gonna be proud of. This is just a preview, as I mentioned, we'll come back probably after break with some more specifics, but I do wanna talk about some of the key next step. Some of those next steps are between the E-Web and the Foundation team, and Jay covered some of those, the appraisals, the kinda MOE, memorandum of agreement that they're working toward. I think the important recognition really is that it's possible that if they make the significant progress with E-Web and their negotiations, that something could start next year. And it's very important for us to be in sync with that process so that, you know, our end of the partnership in delivering this project is able to stay kind of in line with E-Web and the Foundation team and all of our city components of the project, so that we're really prepared to move forward. There's also some critical next steps that are really associated with the Foundation team and the city that we've been working on, and I'll go through them kinda one by ones. There's questions about the park. The park is critical for the development. I don't think this development would go forward without the park. And the same likewise, I don't think the park would go forward necessarily without the development, and I don't really think a park around, next to a fenced-in brownfield industrial site is really our envision for the, for the riverfront. So they, they need each other, so they need to be, they need to be coordinated. We have an MOU with E-Web that was signed about a year ago. It spells out that the park project would occur concurrent with the development or within five years. Assuming that the development could actually begin sooner than four years from now, we know that we really need to start the park development process now, and we, in a sense, we've done that. We have an established team, multidisciplinary staff team. We've also brought in some team members from the Foundation team, their design team and so forth, to start to coordinate on a lot of the park design issues. We're conducting more in-depth analysis of the site, surveys, utilities, you know, what's the actual footprint of the park gonna be, those types of things. We're scoping out a design process for the park. We're working with the U of L Foundation team around timing and coordination issues, and Jay mentioned that. We're also working on some preliminary funding strategies for the park, and that'll be part of kind of, I think of as a package of considerations that would come back to council, and quiet zone was mentioned, the park is part of that, the Eighth Avenue Crossing is part of that as well. There's also some logical open space agreements. If you look at the master plan, you know, there's a kind of a delineated park along the river, but there's also these green fingers that kinda navigate through the site, and those need to be kinda figured out and discussed as to how they get developed, how they get funded, how they get owned, how they get maintained, and how are they eventually coordinated with the park. So, again, we started with the University Foundation team to scope out some of those issues, and from their standpoint, I think they will wanna solidify some of those agreements, maybe even before they acquire the property, so we're working on a lot of those kind of details as well. The quiet zone is mentioned as a critical part of the project. Again, this would be, I think, part of the kinda considerations for what tools and investments we need to make moving forward that we come back to later after council break. And we mentioned the housing and how critical that is to the quiet zone. The Eighth and Hilliard Crossing, again, is considered to be a critical element, you know, for this site to be successful, people have to get to the site, but it's also really important for us to get people from the river path and from the park to downtown. Again, this is something that we planned for, for many years. Because it's complicated, it requires street closures, quiet zone, negotiations with the railroad and the Federal Rail Administration, there's a long lead time, so we really think that that design work really needs to start now, and so that, again, we stay in sync with the project and the development team. And as Council Brown mentioned, this is within the downtown urban, or the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, and those resources might be an avenue that we could use to design and ultimately build the crossing. Willamette to Willamette is really an idea that goes beyond just Eighth Avenue Crossing. It's really looking at Eighth Avenue, kind of from Willamette Street to the Willamette River. We're currently scoping a project that would create a public realm vision for this corridor that really gets people to the river. If you consider the E-Web redevelopment, City Hall, Whole Foods, the potential Butterfly Lot, the Shed, other potential development along Eighth Street, now is the time to really start thinking about Eighth Street and how, generally, how downtown, kinda from Willamette Street to the Willamette River all connects together, so we're working on that as well. We talked about the triple bottom line. We, again, fully expect to do a triple bottom line analysis before we come back to council with any considerations about investments and so forth. You know, there are some tools out there, we're really looking at some existing kinda basics and tools and models, and kind of looking at how do we modify those to specifically address this project, which just has so many different moving parts and aspirations. We're very fortunate, Ann Feifield has just joined our team, she was previously a senior economist with Echo Northwest, and she'll be leading that and working with Babe Sullivan to work on that triple bottom line analysis and developing that tool, and so you'll see that work coming forward. Ultimately, we're kinda working towards a development agreement, and that really is a development agreement that includes commitments from both parties, the city and the Foundation team, as to what they'll deliver and how we can help them deliver their vision. You know, we need to invest proactively, efficiently, we need to work really closely with them. Again, we're committed to using the TBL kind of approach, and so is the Foundation team, so we're very kind of confident that there'll be a lot of thought given into how we, how we move forward. Just, you know, I think there's a few public investment opportunities that we've kinda already mentioned, the park, the quiet zone, the crossing, those are logical places that we will probably wanna start the conversation with council. There's also some other opportunities that we would value very highly. We may want to support, you know, for example, the preservation of the two historic buildings on the site, there's the Botress Building, there's the steam plant. The master plan also envisions enhanced landscaping, environmentally sensitive stormwater treatment, green streets. Again, we wanna, we probably will wanna make sure as, as many of those elements are realized as we look at some of the investment strategies as we move forward. Again, very complicated site, you know, there's likely to be other investment opportunities. We're really looking at turning this into this. It's gonna be challenging, again, we have very high aspirations, it's gonna be complicated, the vision is very ambitious, but I think the good news is, is that the Foundation team and the partnership with E-Web really creates a truly unique partnership opportunity, so, you know, at this point, I would just summarize by saying that we're very encouraged by the progress we're making in this project, so, but we have a lot of hard work ahead of us.
Thanks, Danny. I just wanna say, yes, it's complicated, but it's very exciting, and really, this opportunity with the river is, will never happen again, so it's an incredible, incredible thing for our community. I just wanna say a couple things about this that maybe will be helpful. I think it's gonna be important, as we move through this over time, to introduce this to any public policymakers in the city, and that doesn't, just doesn't mean us around this table, but people who will be making policy decisions who are in different groups throughout the city, that they all kinda understand where we're going with this. And I think in when you're, maybe when we have new councilors, new mayor, whatever, it's gonna be very, more important than getting to know our departments, it's gonna be getting to know our vision and where, what we're working on and where we wanna go. So I think those things really need, and I, as I looked at this wonderful presentation that you did, I just think, you know, everybody around this table and anybody who's engaged in this in any way should have access to sort of the bookshelf of plans, right? I mean, I think people need to know both the history and what they can find and those that people have been working on for a long time, much like you just did, and make it easy and accessible for people. And I do wanna suggest that when people are so busy, staff is working so hard, all of you are working so hard, it can be hard to be as inclusive as you need to be, but part of the success of this is going to be keeping everybody sort of torqued up on it from, from now until well into the future. So that takes a lot of focus and a lot of work, but I think the benefit of keeping people engaged at a pretty high level in this is that they will embrace the vision and really get excited themselves. So I just encourage you to, to foster that kind of inclusive discussion on an ongoing basis as you do all this hard work that's ahead. Anybody else have anything they wanna?
Yeah, just a little bit about, more specifically about our role in the park. Our role with the agreement with E-Web is to build out the park along the riverfront, and also, does it include the open spaces that you were talking about?
With the agreement with the E-Web is basically that they would convey a three-acre strip along the river. It's not exactly defined yet, but that's one of the things we're working on, but it's basically the strip along the river, and that'd be conveyed for a dollar, so to speak. And they've, we have some agreements about them putting half a million dollars into like a 10-year maintenance fund for the park, and then there's some timeline considerations for moving forward. The MOU at this point is somewhat basic, so we still have a lot of details. As I mentioned, those kinda green fingers, whether or not those become part of the park, part of the private development, and who owns and maintains and pays for, all of those things have to be worked out, and I assume we will probably, we need to start working on those sooner rather than later, because they're really critical for the development team to move forward, so.
Yeah, I would really applaud E-Web for conveying that property for a dollar, having us to use our funds to buy that piece of property would then make it impossible to build it out. So by doing that, E-Web's basically making that a community priority and then allowing us to use the Riverfront Research Park monies, apparently that's the only pot of money we have for this kinda stuff, to be able to then build out that park, and then, of course, we still have the ongoing issue of, of maintenance of parks that we're trying to deal with, and this adds to that problem or creates more of an opportunity, depending on how you look at it. So, other than, you didn't speak to the open space areas, and other than that, what other roles do we have?
Some of it is unknown, because as Jay mentioned, this project will be phased, so we don't necessarily know what all of those are going forward, because it may happen over time. I think there's kind of a starter kit of things in the park and the getting across A- I think there's kind of a starter kit of things in the park and the getting across Eighth Street and the quiet zone. You know, and then there's that open space that kind of intertwines into the space. And there's, I would envision higher level of amenities. So, you know, the nicer streets, nicer sidewalks, nicer amenities, those are historic preservations. I think those are the things that we put a lot of value on. So, if you kind of try to forecast what we might be interested in investing in, I think we would want to start with those things.
But the basic infrastructure, the roads, utilities, and the buildings and all of that is on the developer?
Yet to be negotiated at this point, but we don't really know.
But most of that's going to be developer. That's not going to be on our nickel.
I don't think we've engaged at that level yet. That's part of what we need to start discussing with their team, so to speak.
Thank you. Great project. And one of the questions that was asked, and I think it's a very appropriate one, is what is the city's role in this triumvirate, if you will? And it has to be more than just lots of praise and good intentions and farewell, hail fellow. What would our partnership look like? And one of the tools we have for that, one of the mechanisms, is we have a riverfront urban renewal district. And that's not only a source of ongoing funds, but it's also got a capital in it right now. And from what I've heard, both in previous work sessions and the one today, is there's actually a growing list of things that that urban renewal district could help to pay for. To carry on with Alan's point, we haven't figured out what the infrastructure costs or responsibilities will be, but likely there will be some role for us in helping to pay for infrastructure. Another one is the parks. You know, those parks need to be paid for. They're enormous amenity for the future of this area in terms of making it attractive and creating a quality of life we're looking for. That's also something that has to be financed. And then, just Monday, we talked about a quiet zone and how it might also be used for that. And I'm thinking, if I start totaling all of these things together, it starts adding up to more than what's in that urban renewal district or what's likely to come in from it on the ongoing, although that could perhaps help with some of the ongoing costs. And so, the question would be, and I don't expect you to have an answer now, is once the urban renewal funds have been utilized, what other sources would be available for us so that we could continue to maintain our partnership? I think we have to step up in ways, perhaps regulatory, but also financially. If we really want to see this thing realized the way it should be realized, the way that we will all be proud of, then we have to have a role, and that role has to extend with the urban renewal district, but it may need to extend in other ways. And my curiosity would be, just as it was with the quiet zone, what are some ways we could help to generate the capital to help support this kind of project? And that's an open-ended question. And so, it may take a lot longer than, off the top of your head, to think about what that might be. But we need to start thinking about it now.
Yeah. For example, there may be some other sources of funding that, in fact, we've already started identifying for the park. It may not only be urban renewal resources. Part of what we'll come back to council sometime after break to talk about really is what are the range of possibilities for us investing and maybe even have some, you know, cost discussions about those and also have the kind of the triple bottom line analysis tool to go with that so that we can kind of value those investments at a lot of different levels. And so, that's coming back to you, and that's what we're kind of trying to preview here today, is that we don't know everything, but we're going to be chipping away over the next few months and coming back to council with some of those.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Any other questions out here? So, the only other thing that I wanted to, and you're probably on this, I'm just curious about it, but I think as you think about a park, you should think about active uses of the river as well as the land space and whether any of that can generate some funds to help with the maintenance and those kinds of things. So, getting that into the picture seems to me to be really important. And we should be thinking about that early as well. That creates a whole realm of opportunities that we've never actually had before. So, I think that could be very exciting for the community, and it could be very exciting for us to approach this in a little different way than we have any place else we have in the city. So, it's what we can gain for our city and how we can pay for that. I think there are opportunities with the river that we don't have anywhere else. So, I hope you'll look at that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very, very much for the.
Thank you.
It's the launch, so to speak. Thank you all very much for being here, everybody. Willamette to Willamette, okay. So, we have now a, Lisa Gardner's here for a legislative, a quick legislative update, right?
Yes.
I have to say, she has been working very hard. She has been living in Salem, pretty much.
Is it possible to do a quick legislative?
I can do as quickly as you like. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I thought I would start by just giving you a couple high-level, big-picture kind of bills that were not necessarily specifically lobbying, but of course, paying attention to. One that you probably have certainly been paying attention to is the Clean Fuels Bill, which the Senate built.
Hold on just a second. We'll let the air clear a little bit so we can hear. Just push everybody out the door so we can hear up here. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
So, just a couple of big-picture bills. The Clean Fuels Bill, which I think most of you probably were passed out of the House last week. The House leadership was very appreciative of the floor letter that we submitted. It's expected to be signed by the governor anytime. Transportation Bill, it's a big, high-level commitment from the House and Senate leadership along with the governor. But of course, it's kind of tangled up in the politics behind the Clean Fuels Bill, and it's not clear whether that will move forward or be referred. Along the lines of transportation, there's the rail component of that. And Mayor Pierce and I have been working closely on that, partly as part of our United Front effort, where we're trying to find some funds to finish the layover platform for the Amtrak station. And we met with the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee staff, both Republican staff and also Peter DeFazio, who's now ranking on that. We met with his staff, and what we heard really clearly was that the Republican leadership very much supports capital funding, to the extent that that's available. But they will continue to look to the states for state-supported rail operations. And so, it's really critical to our overall big picture that we can help, do what we can to get this passed at the state level. I believe there's commitment there. When the co-chairs' budget came out, it had a smaller amount than was needed to fully fund the Amtrak Cascades, which got a lot of people very nervous. My understanding is the governor's committed to that, the leadership is committed to that, and we're going to continue working sort of in a coalition with our local partners, Representative Nathanson, and of course, the mayor, who's on the statewide committee. And sick leave, moving on to that. Both House and Senate leadership are very committed to passing a sick leave bill this session. I think they're in sort of the final negotiations of what that might look like. I haven't seen what that looks like. And again, we're not lobbying it specifically, other than submitting our letter of support, which we did. Their hope is that the final version is what goes to Ways and Means, and I expect it will probably go within the next several weeks, or that's the goal. And I'll keep you informed on that one, obviously. Measure 91, marijuana, which has been moving very slowly and deliberately in the joint committee, trying to get as much information on that as they can to make sure that it's fully understood. We have folks locally who are working on some of those issues. We're not specifically lobbying it. We won't really be able to affect the outcome of that, but we're paying attention. Specific Eugene priority bills that we are spending quite a bit of time on. Senate Bill 482, which is the Pacific Northwest Manufacturing Partnership, which you know about, we're working really hard at the federal level to get the federal designation. That application is due in just a few weeks. And so, we've been working very hard trying to close the gap on what was the difference between our getting designated last time and not. So, this was a bill that was introduced by Senator Edwards on our behalf, although it really is for the entire partnership, which goes all the way up to Portland, Vancouver, Hood River, Corvallis, Albany, and then also includes Eugene, Springfield, and County. The Washington legislature is moving a similar bill forward. So, we should hopefully have that support in our application that passed out of the Senate a couple of weeks ago, trying to get it scheduled either Friday or next week in the House. And so, our hope is to be able to say that that's already passed. House Bill 3420 is the Housing First Pilot. It's a pilot project that we're working on with Lane County. Representative Hoyle introduced it for us, along with Senator Geller. And it is creating a Housing First Pilot in Eugene and Albany. It's a programmatic pilot. It's not a capital funding. And so, a lot of work to be done, and it'll probably be amended, but we got it in, got dropped, I think, last week, and we'll be working on that. Mandatory, did I just cover mandatory sick leave? I did. Senate Bill 611, that is probably the bill we've been working the hardest on, trying to oppose. It's about central assessment. It's very complex. I know enough to be dangerous. We have a lot of experts working on it, including our legal team. That is a bill that Comcast, Google, Yahoo, the major providers care very much about. And Glenn may be able to talk about some of the judicial pieces, but it takes the assessment of the property tax from, the assessment of the property tax goes from local to central statewide assessment. That, I believe, is the part that was through the court case that Comcast did not prevail in. So, they're looking for a legislative fix to some degree. The issue is that it's how you tax intangible assets. And so, their argument is that, well, they're taxed more in Oregon than any other state in the country and would be the only on the West Coast that taxes it. So, it's meant, it's being put out there as a pro-business bill that would keep Oregon open for business and make sure that we're not seen as not a good place to work or to bring, to attract new industry or keep existing businesses. The trouble we have with it is that there's a couple of different pieces in it. One would allow tax breaks for siting, like a data center, which we do not object to. Whether we choose to ever do that, it should be up to local jurisdiction. So, we're fine with that. So, Google Fiber or somebody like that. The other allows for tax incentives for bringing in high-speed fiber. So, we, of course, very interested in that. We'd love to see that in our downtown, and our businesses depend on that. The third piece, though, gives them, gives existing companies a tax break on their intangible property. So, the way that I've understood that is if you take a mile of a rail line, it doesn't have a whole lot of value as a piece of property, but it's the system when you string together the whole piece. And so, it sailed through the Senate. Chair Haas is really supportive of it. There was a hearing yesterday in the House Committee, which is Phil Barnhart's committee, and they, they're sort of painting this as a very carefully crafted agreement that will fall apart if you tangle with it. But it really didn't include the city's perspectives. And so, we're working hard. I didn't get to testify yesterday because it was continued till Monday, so I'll go back on Monday and make our points. But that's going to, we're probably, we're probably not going to get what we want, but we're hoping to minimize, because it has potentially a $500,000 a year impact on our property tax revenue. So, that's significant. Let's see, what else? There's a privilege tax bill, Senate Bill 569. That hasn't moved because all the energy's been on central assessment, but it's very similar to the bill we saw in 2013, which was 2455. And it changes how we assess our local taxes and caps it at 5%. And so, we'll be obviously working on that. So, just a few sort of, I'm calling them second-tier bills. We care about them, but they're not taking as much time, and we don't have as much at stake or have as much ability to influence the outcome on. Inclusionary zoning, which you passed, high priority, and we submitted testimony on that. I know that Speaker Kotek, it's a very high priority for her, and so, I assume that something will move, but I don't know what. It will probably be a negotiated outcome with the home builders. House Bill 2554, it's the one that we're opposing, requires binding arbitration for unresolved midterm collective bargaining. And so, and I don't fully understand all, it's already passed out of the House, it's moving, it's in the Senate now. But as I understand it, the way the current law is written, and Alana's working on this and she knows, so we're covered in terms of expertise, but it sort of swings the pendulum from maybe overly favoring employees to overly favoring the bargaining unit. And there's something in the middle that we're trying to work on a negotiated outcome for. Senate Bill 414, it allows judicial review of procurement for services. And as I understand it, it came from contracting school bus services, but it has more broad implications in how we do our procurement contracting. And to have to do cost-benefit analysis and a judicial review be very costly and not particularly efficient in terms of running government services. Let's see, just a couple others. House Bill 2639 is the Lane Transit Pass System for Students, which we submitted a letter of support for. I'm not sure where the politics are on that, so we'll do what we can. But obviously, Lane Transit District introduced that and is lobbying for it. A couple of other items that are coming. You heard about solar tax bills on Monday, and Councilor Sillink asked me to get a little bit more information on them. I don't have all their numbers, but they have to do with residential solar tax credits, large-scale solar, and a couple other pieces. And as I understand it, the large-scale solar has a very big fiscal component, but people like the idea. So, for sure, if there's interest in the council, we can submit a letter on that. Residential solar tax credits is likely to move. And I don't know much, I wasn't able to find out in the last couple of hours more about the solar installations and extending the solar pilot. But if you decide to do something on those, we'll obviously lobby them. There's also a bill on aerial spraying coming that I don't know a lot about, trying to find out more, but it's one that I understand we've, you have heard people have concerns about pesticide spraying. Senate Bill 629 is the Right to Rest. It establishes the Right to Rest Act. It's extremely complex legally and operationally. The Right to Rest, 629. It's not clear if there's any momentum on moving that. If it did, I think we'd, it'd be hard and complex, and we'd want to take a look at it. So, I think that's kind of it on the high level.
George?
Yeah, just real briefly, I had somebody ask me about this the other day in reference to the sick leave bill that's going through right now. We took some action, and I can't remember the specifics. So, in 20 words or less, John, what's the status of our sick leave ordinance, implementation, and enforcement, based on what the state's doing?
The ordinance takes effect July 1, as do the administrative rules. There's a grace period that goes, I think it's in the administrative rules, it wasn't in the ordinance, that would go until October 1. The legislation going through, now I took a look at the early bill, I haven't looked at it recently. The early bill didn't have any language about preemption, so it was not at all clear whether if that passes, it preempts what happens at the local level, or we could wind up with basically two overlapping bills unless the council decides not to have them overlapping. At some point, I expect that the state legislation, somebody will say, let's deal with, basically it's Portland's and Eugene's ordinances, and either decide there's going to be one uniform mandatory sick leave system across the state, or alternatively, there's going to be something across the state, plus local governments can have something that would be in addition to the state. Certainly, we couldn't have anything that would be less than what the state's requiring, but the local government, you know, they could say, everybody gets three days. The council can say, everybody gets five days, unless the legislature takes specific action to preempt. And the bill that I saw, the draft I saw originally, did not have that preemption language in it.
Okay, thank you.
Mia can provide just another, a little bit more around sort of the admin rules and what we're doing around.
So, in light of everything Glenn just said, we're moving forward with offering trainings to the community. And the next update you'll receive from us, we'll provide you the dates that we'll be offering those trainings. We're working with Bulleye to finalize that, and they'll likely start in April. And we'll, we are going to proceed, knowing that we're start, that we'll be moving forward on July 1 and educating the public to work with that date.
And then, thank you very much for that. And then, the other thing, we had a real brief discussion Monday about the layover platform for the rail lines and possible costs and locations of that. And then, you were mentioning something about the state funding for rail may not be anticipated as much as what will be needed. How's that going to affect either layover platform project in general and rail service in general? Do you have an idea on that at all?
Well, what I can tell you is that the original co-chair's budget didn't have the same, didn't reflect the same amount that was in the governor's budget. And I think the number was 12.4 or 12-point-something million dollars, which is less than it actually costs annually to operate. But there was one-time money that got repurposed to pay the difference. The co-chairs, co-chairs were looking for places to save money, I believe. And so, when they, when they put out their budget, I don't think the intention was to effectively cut the rail service, which you can't buy a part of a service. And I'm not sure that they fully understood. So, in talking with Carmen Four and others at ODOT, they believe that there's education and lobbying to be done, that there's a commitment to funding rail. And so, I don't think, I think we don't have to panic. And so I don't think, I think we don't have to panic yet. I think we're just working closely and diligently with the state and with our delegation and others to see that we can get that money restored. And so what I was saying before was on our United Front trip back in February, we met with committee members of the rail, of the TNI, Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and their model, they call it the European model, is to fund capital and let the states pick up the operating piece. And so we would certainly want to put our best foot forward and be able to say we have a commitment at the state level to continue funding Amtrak service.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I've got Alan in the queue, but before that, I just want to say that one of the, one of the issues we're facing right now as a state is because there's less federal investment in rail here, and at the same time, we've got conflicts on the line because of the uptick in freight. And we were at a sort of a 95% on time for passenger, and I think it went down to around 50 because of the conflict over the rail. Well, that has a drastic effect on who chooses to use the rail, because people actually do want to know they're going to get somewhere on time. So all of these things kind of collided at the same time, and it felt like it was putting, and then we pay for passenger rail in this state unbelievably on vanity license plates and lawnmower fuel. So we don't, we don't have a long-term funding plan for rail. We need, and we're being told we need to do that, but we, in the meantime, we need to keep the doors open. So that's, right now, that's pretty much what we're doing, is trying to keep the doors open. And then, and we've done the work. I want to say also that when the money came out for rail before, we weren't prepared to get any because we didn't have a rail plan. Well, we have done that now. We have a rail plan. So we've done all the preliminary work, and even our train ridership has gone up tremendously in the last decade. So we have a good story to tell. We're just caught in a whole big line of circumstances right now, and we need to get over this hump and figure out how we're going to put more long-term thought into how we're going to fund passenger rail in this state, right?
And if I could, the money that you just referred to, that we didn't get because the state wasn't ready, it's our funds and it's the American Reinvestment Act.
That's right.
We got a piece of that to do the NEPA work on the layover platform, but Washington State had a rail plan in place, and so they got a big chunk of that money, and we didn't, which is what?
I think they got 8 million. I mean, we got 8 million, which is mostly went to the depot in Portland, and I think in Washington, they got like, I don't know, 60 mil or something. So that's just the sad story of where we found ourselves and how we've been trying to work on it, move forward, and got caught in a whole lot of circumstances because of changing conditions that are happening in this country right now.
Alan?
Maybe, Mary, you could talk to Lisa about the operations funds for the Amtrak. And I know it was like, it was cost $10 million to keep it going.
Keep the doors open, right.
Initial proposal was 5 million.
Yes.
Which means zero, because you can't buy part of a service.
That's right.
Like you said, you can't buy half of Amtrak.
That's right.
So if they don't, so what's the status of that?
Well, so that's what we are, we're talking with Leah Craft, who's ODOT's legislative person, and also Carmen Four. They are very aware that we're interested in this. We've met with the UVO, they're very interested in this. I think that's what they believe is an educational issue, to talk to legislators and make sure that they understand that. There's a, there's support for ongoing rail. There's not an issue with trying to convince people that rail is important. It's just changing that initial budget item to fully reflect. And I believe that they'll get there this year. As the mayor pointed out, it's going to be, it's our ongoing long-range plan for funding rail operations that we have to start thinking about as a state.
Just to clarify, the paid sick leave motion was to bring back language for a public hearing, because we have to do that because it's an ordinance, and maybe even have that occur as late as May to give the legislature some time to act. But the intent was, if there was a major change in the way, the bill that the state came up with that conflicts with what we're doing, then we would allow up to three months, October 1 implementation date, so businesses could then true-up and get their systems in order. Because if they pass a bill the end of June and it goes into effect July and it's substantially different, that would be, that would be problematic for local businesses to deal with. So if there's something major, then we would, then we would, we could extend that so that they could do that true-up. But if it's minor stuff, you know, if it's like a math thing in a software or something like that, changing 40 hours to 56 hours or something really kind of minor or other kind of minor things that really doesn't warrant doing that, then we wouldn't need to do that. And of course, it's all prerequisite of us doing any of that would be that they actually do something in the legislature. I know it's a high priority, and the leadership thinks it's going to move and something's going to happen, but funky things happen in the legislature, so who knows? So as of right now, we're just, we're sticking with July 1 unless something triggers us the need to change, like a major difference in legislation and legislature acts.
I wouldn't want this discussion to end and the conversation about rail to end without saying this at this publicly, is that it's going to be very, it is very important for the legislature to hear from the public that rail, passenger rail is important to them. And so one of the, those who are advocates for passenger rail, this is the time they need to be speaking up, and speaking up a lot, because there's great competition for the dollars at the legislature, and it's important the legislature know that this matters. And so I'm, one of the things I'm going to be doing is doing an op-ed piece, and I'll ask the mayors from Albany and Salem and Portland to join me in that, because I just think we have to demonstrate that we're just not taking this casually, that it's really an important thing. And I did want to say it around this table, because people actually do watch us. So, you know, yes.
The broader context of that is the budget picture. And last I heard was that it was a modest uptick, but no big, large amounts of revenue, but there's not going to be a major cuts. Is that still?
That's what I have heard. I have no more information on that. I think the one question was the kicker and how that's going to play out.
Whether the kicker kicks in.
Thank you for the update. Keep us.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes, yes. Please speak.
Yes, thanks. So if my memory's correct, the council passed a resolution asking our rep in Salem to work on or support inclusionary zoning, and I didn't hear anything about that in the update unless I missed it.
You did miss it.
Kick attention.
It got mentioned, but she can do it again.
Hi, Councilor Stratt, this is Lisa Gardner. Yes, we did submit testimony on that. We're following that. That is Speaker Kotek's very high priority bill. I think it's going to likely be a negotiated amendment with the home builders, but something should pass, and we're following it closely.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right. So with that, I think that ends our business today. Thank you all very much. Yes.